Good evening, everyone.
Good morning.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you all to the Farmington Board of Education regular meeting scheduled for Monday, March 5, 2024. Call the meeting to order, and we'll start with pledge allegiance, please. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic. One nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty for justice.
Nadine, that was fantastic.
Right? Impressive.
I fully expect that you had a flag in your kitchen while you were doing that.
I have it on my phone.
Oh, even better. Even better. All right. Can I get, our next item on our agenda is item three, approval of minutes. May have a motion to approve the minutes of the January 22, 2024 BOE regular meeting.
Motion?
Second.
Thanks, actually. Sylvia, I'll ask you a second if you don't mind. Thanks. Okay. Discussion. Anybody have any comments, revisions, changes, anything? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion carries. Item five, consideration of the superintendent's report, professional appointments, resignations, and retirements.
So this is a big report for us. We have one appointment, run resignation, but eight retirements for the end of this school year. Each of these teachers have contributed so much to the Farmington Public Schools. They've been with us for quite some time, too. We're teachers of the year, but all of them are incredible contributors to our school district, extraordinary educators, and we've been so fortunate to have them be a part of the Farmington Public Schools. And, you know, we wish all of them the very best in their retirement. We always say, you truly don't leave us because, like Marty knows, you're going to get a call probably that we need some help later on. But again, I just wanted to take the moment to celebrate these eight extraordinary educators and thank them for their service and all their contributions over the years.
I would just echo that. The amount of institutional knowledge of our school district that we're losing with these retirements is significant and irreplaceable, frankly. These people were special and have been with us for a very long time, and we'll miss them. Okay. Next, I would like, if I could, to get a motion to move out of the new business item on our agenda, item 7B, to move item 7B up to become item 5B. Need a motion?
Motion?
A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good. Motion carries. So we'll now invite the superintendent to discuss with us the, our guests from Specialty Transportation, Inc.
Yes, I'd like to invite them up to the table to give an opportunity for the group to provide a really quick presentation. I'm going to hand this over to our assistant superintendent, Scott Hurwitz, to just give a little summary of the process that we went through and how we arrived at today's meeting and this agenda item.
Thank you very much. Happy to have representatives from Specialty Transportation here, Michael Turner and Tim Griffin, who will do some more talking in a few minutes around, around their company. I just wanted to give the board and the public a chance just to understand again. I gave some of this overview on the Saturday workshop as well, so apologize in advance if there's redundancy between the two meetings, but just wanted again to highlight the process that we went through. Also wanted to take a moment to thank, you know, our Board and Negotiations Committee and a variety of members of the Central Office Team and Farmington Public Schools Administrative Team who were exceptionally dedicated to this process and worked throughout, you know. Andrea, I think you've been coming, you remember all these meetings, they're probably in your calendar as you've been throughout the process here. But the RFP, which is Request for Proposals, was, was released in early November. Following that, we held a public pre-bid and public bid opening. Those took place in November and then in December. And prior to the December break and then over the break, Matt Ross, Sam Kilpatrick, Beth Haver, myself, we took all the proposals that we received, we reviewed each of them, we then spent time meeting and discussing those proposals. We received six proposals, which is quite substantial based on what the market looks like in other parts of Connecticut, so that was quite a bit of interest in, in this contract. Of the six proposals, we selected four vendors to continue that process with. They were invited for in-person interviews and presentations, and so we held those interviews. And then after that, we continued to analyze with the Negotiations Committee the proposals that we received, considering cost. We conducted reference checks, a minimum of three per vendor that we interviewed, and then did a follow-up interview as well. And I'm pleased to have Specialty Transportation here to share a bit more about themselves and what they can offer to the Farmington Public Schools. But I can say with confidence that of those reference checks, they were by far really, really impressive to listen to in terms of the service that they deliver and the reliability of their service. And we're eager to have that opportunity here in Farmington to deliver for our, for our families. We did conduct a site visit. Beth, Don Driggs, who is our transportation liaison, and I visited the Specialty Transportation Depot in Avon, Connecticut, and had a chance to, had a chance to see their operation and practice as well with, before moving to this juncture. And so, you know, I do have a few more thoughts, but I don't know, maybe now Matt would be an appropriate time to let Michael get started, and then, and then I can go back through a few more of the particulars.
... school year, $4,685,609 for the 2026-2027 school year, $4,919,890 for the 2027-2028 school year, and $5,165,856 for the 2028-2029 school year, with Specialty Transportation Incorporated for the five-year period beginning July 1, 2024, and continuing through June 30, 2029.
Give me a second.
Second.
Discussion. Anybody have any questions or want to address our, our guests? Erica?
Thank you. Good afternoon. Good evening. Thank you so much for your presentation, and although you, you said you, I could tell that you are speaking with passion for this work and that this is not just a job for you. I could just hear it from your presentation. The question that I do have is regarding, you mentioned the special education, like the buses, what were they titled?
STVs, the minivans?
Yeah. And then you mentioned the training, the training that is provided to your, to the drivers. Can you describe what that training is and specifically what type of training do they receive for busing children with, who have disabilities, special education needs, or, you know, may be experiencing some difficulty while en route?
I wish my trainer was here. So the training that they receive to get licensed is through our safety department, so it depends on what license they're getting. So school bus training is, because it's a CDL, so larger vehicles, and there's proper procedures for student drop-off and student pickup that they need to learn, their lights, when to turn them on, when to turn them off, when to check their mirrors. It's pretty extensive. It's about a free, probably about a three to six-month process to get somebody licensed from start to finish. That depends on how quickly, or the availability of the driver and how many days a week they can come in for training. We're training every day, but some people can only come in once a week, some people come in three times. There's also background checks that are done through DMV, driver histories, criminal background checks for every driver that, or actually every employee, but specifically every driver that, that applies. For the STV training, that is an eight-hour course with our master trainer, which gives them a certificate that they know the proper procedures for the STV, because obviously they don't have the red lights or the stop signs that come out to stop traffic. So proper procedure for picking up at the end of driveways or pulling into driveways, backing out of driveways and that sort of thing. Those drivers are also taken out on the road before they're allowed to drive the vehicle with our training, with our certified trainer or master trainer to show that they're confident in driving and driving safely. We're constantly monitoring throughout the school year speeds because we use GPS tracking on all of our vehicles, so we're constantly monitoring speeds. Obviously, any complaints that may come in the office from the general public or from parents about whether they see a vehicle doing something that they feel is unsafe, or if we find that a driver is doing something that we feel is unsafe against our policies, they're put back into training before they're put back onto the road. Specifically with students with different disabilities or having a hard time, that's a case-by-case thing, a case-by-case that we go with through the town. So if the town knows that a student has a certain disability or is having a tough time riding the vehicle, we'll have a discussion with the town on what steps we want to take. We can give additional training to our drivers at that time, but we don't train them, we don't kind of, we don't throw everything in the jambalaya, right, and give them every sort of training they can possibly have. It'd be, it'd be more case-by-case working with the town and knowing that student so that we can get specific training on that specific student. That tends to work out better than to have them trained as a whole.
Thank you.
Other questions? Angela?
I'm not sure if it's as much for you guys. I enjoyed the presentation as well. I'm super passionate about improved buses, so this was really refreshing to see, and I think you did great with PowerPoint as well. I don't know if my question's really related to you guys, so I'm going to direct it more towards Scott. I noticed there was like a 5% increase per year on this contract. I'm not familiar with the current contract that we're under. Is that in line with it, or like, what is that based off of in terms of, you know, what else we saw? And I have a follow-up after that.
That's a great question. So the, the range of bids we received were anywhere from, and again, there's, I think there are some caveats with this, so we're projecting, right? And so every time in our current contract, every time one of our STVs goes over four hours, we incur additional charges, and that's all but one run currently that we're being billed for. So very difficult to predict those charges. With the contract that we're presenting today, the price is the price that you see listed in the back of the contract. And so that is what we requested during the process. We did not, we received variable, variable ways of going about that. So some of our, some of our folks who offered proposals offered a four-hour, and then what it cost additional to that, four and a half hours, six hours, you know, the, the gist of our runs are two tiers, which means you're either a high school or a middle school run, and then you do West Woods or an elementary school. So the, so each bus does those two routes. I'll get, and I'll get back to the question that was asked, but, so that's what I say when I give you, when I, when I give you the next set of information, piece of information, I want it to be couched with there were variable offers, and we had to try to right-fit those offers to make a decision on what would be best, and coupling that with the presentations, the proposals, the reference checks, and so on and so forth. So our contract was up, so either way, we were, you know, in the past, the district has continued to renegotiate, and so they haven't gone out to bid. This is actually the first time the contract has gone out to bid, and we're certainly grateful for our, our current vendor. And, you know, at the end of June will be our previous vendor, but they certainly have been dedicated over their time, and their drivers and staff have certainly committed to the town, but it was time for a change. So we were renegotiating, so our lowest proposal, again, whether you factor in gasoline or not, our lowest proposal without gasoline was a 9.5, 5% increase. With gasoline, the lowest proposal would have been a 12.3% increase with variable rate of that particular low bid was 7% over, 7% and higher over the next year. So different vendors coupled their, their proposals in different ways coming back to us. You know, specialty, when you factor without gasoline, we project to be an 18% increase, with gasoline, a little bit over 20% as an increase. And so the, the rates were higher, you know, our highest, our highest first-year contract without including gasoline was 6.16 million. So you can see here that we're in the low fours. And so again, there was a lot of analysis that had to be done, and then we tried as best as possible to fit what's currently being offered, and that's where you get the match of the projection here. Of course, we're hoping that we can find some efficiencies, in particular in our specialized transportation, which is a major driver of our overages currently. This was one of, another one of the reasons that made specialty really attractive to us, their, their expertise in specialized transportation in addition to their proximity in the area. And we're hoping that if opportunities avail to ride-share or combined rides, that we'll be able to do so. But I know that was a long-winded answer to the question, but it really depended on each vendor had a different cost structure. This one is, is obviously a large increase in the first year and then remained steady throughout the length of the contract.
Before you follow up, I want to ask, does anybody else have any other questions? Okay, go ahead.
So when you say there's deficiencies that we could find, so those numbers are not locked in then for each of the following years, is that what you're saying? I'm looking at it in terms of the budget, too, because in the budget book, we had budgeted like 4.7 for the buses, if I'm looking at the one from Saturday, but you're saying here, one here would be like 4.2. So is there actually a cost savings as opposed to what we looked at on Saturday versus this? Or is there additional costs on top of this that's not being shown here?
Transportation is spread over a few areas, so we're obviously have a locked-in contract, so I think what you'll see is, once this contract is signed, there may be some movement there's in gasoline and also in special education services. So the, I think we, Beth, I think we hit it pretty close on the head with this projection and what we budgeted, but this is, this is applying what we transport now based on the cost of each vehicle in the contract that specialty has. So there's a different rate for big buses and then for small buses and then wheelchair buses. So those, we took all the rates based on what we're offering now, and this is how we got at the, the estimated amounts. So potentially over time, and our hope over time is that we'll actually mitigate some costs. I think the other important realization is that what we actually budget, as you can see in our, in our financials, and what we're actually spending are two different things as well. So although this is a 20% increase in, in what we're budgeting, we're also optimistic that we will lessen the overage charges that we've been spending. Although we've been budgeting a certain amount, that's clearly not what we've been spending over time as well.
Thank you. All right. I'll just add up, gentlemen, thank you very much. Mr., are you the Ryan Pharmacy Griffins? I was going to say. How you doing? Welcome back. We miss Ryan Pharmacy desperately, I will tell you that. Gentlemen, thank you very much for this presentation. We, one of the cool things about being on this board is when we get to see people coming back to Farmington, it's something unique to where we are, and I think something you guys experienced growing up. There's something that just, that brings people back and that want to serve in our communities, and so thank you for that. And look forward to doing work with you over the next five years. All those in favor of approving the motion on the floor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries in the annus week. Welcome to Farmington, gentlemen, or welcome back.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Congratulations.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Next item on our agenda would be item six, unfinished business, policy repeals.
So this was something that was shared with you in December, and we're, as a first reading, and we're bringing it back for a second reading. These are all policies that are either redundant or already are covered in state law and really don't need a separate policy. Again, we're going through a whole policy book with Shipman and Goodwin, and so they're actually reviewing each and making recommendations. The non-resident attendance, this is something that has been in place for a while, so this is not a redundant policy, but I wanted to spend a moment explaining why the repeal. So we have the option of offering out-of-district families potentially to come here to Farmington for a tuition cost. That would go through the board. In the past, the board has approved tuition students to come to Farmington from other communities. We just don't have room, and we haven't done it in a really long time. So it feels like almost a promise we can't keep by having the policy. So I'll get families that reach out and they want to tuition in their children, and I have to say I don't have any room in, due to class size. And so I think it's probably time that this just isn't something we would continue, given what our projections look like in the next few years. It just feels like we have this out there, and the families that reach out to us are very, very disappointed once we say there's just really no room in the school district to take in tuition students from other communities.
I would just add, these were first brought before the board, before, you know, you were, four of you were here, so if you have any other questions, you know, I would normally, this is the second reading, we should just get this done, but if you have another question, I don't want to feel like you're being precluded from an opportunity to ask.
I was actually just going to say, like, when I read it prepping for this meeting, I was going to abstain from the vote because I felt like I would, not that there's anything wrong with that, but I probably would have just, like, if it was the first reading, asked like which policy these were redundant to, so I could just check for myself before I voted. I have nothing really wrong with them, but I'm just going to abstain for that reason personally, so.
That's fine. You're welcome to do that. Just, one thing, a little aside, just as you guys, I thought this was also true, that if you hadn't been at a meeting where you didn't participate for some reason, you'd have to abstain. I've since come to learn under Robert's rules that you don't have to abstain, so your personal preference, certainly welcome. But that being said, all those in favor of repealing these policies signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
One abstention. Okay. Thank you. Item 6B, budget impact, budget update. Is that something you can wait till you do the assistant superintendent's financial report?
I think, we don't have a report tonight, but I think, I think that we just had a big budget impact, budget update, and, and we're about to have more budget impact and update conversation, I believe, so those are, you know, I don't have much else to share at this time.
Well said, Scott. Well said. Thank you. All right. Item 6C, continuation of our budget review. Folks, this is where we go back to where we started, where we started work, I'm sorry, where we left off on Saturday. Kathy, would you like to kind of handle it from here?
Sure. So this is Monday night, we traditionally bring our principals up to kind of give a little flavor of what they have as priorities in this budget. Carolyn Fink, who is the West District principal, will be representing her colleagues, her K-4 principal colleagues. Then there's Katie Blor, who's our West Woods Upper Elementary School principal, Lisa Kapsinski, IAR principal, Russ Chris, our FHS principal, and Seamus Cullen is here, back to see all of you as our director of special services. So they're going to just go around and give a little bit more information related to the budget and then open it up to any questions.
So I'm going to start. I'm Carolyn Fink, the principal at West District School, and I'm very happy to be here tonight to talk with you about some of our budgetary priorities for next year. And I do speak on behalf of my elementary colleagues, and I'm so happy to do that. First, I want to start by thanking you tonight for your ongoing support of the work that we do in Farmington. I think the budget that we've prepared for '24, '25 reflects our deep commitment to learning environments that are high trust, high engagement, and high expectations, learning spaces for our students, and reflect our commitment to academic excellence, to equity, to social-emotional learning, and really ensuring that all of our students have access to the challenge and support that they need to help realize the dispositions of the vision of the global citizen. That's why we're here. But that's not possible without the work that you do, and so I want to start by just appreciating your time and your effort and all the hours you've spent talking about the budget already. They mean so much to all of us. And so this evening, I want to highlight just a few things, specific priorities that really relate to the elementary school environment in particular. So the first piece I'd like to talk about has to do with enrollment. I'm not sure if you know this, I'm a 25-year veteran of the Farmington Public Schools, and I started my career as a first-grade teacher and then as a kindergarten teacher. And from those experiences in primary education, I know how critically important small class sizes are, especially at the early years, right? That's when we're creating the foundation for our learners and all the skills that they'll go on to develop over the course of their K-12 experience. And across that whole span of time that I've been here, the board has really supported small class sizes in the primary grades, and we appreciate that and look for your continued support in that area. I know it's not easy with four small, smallish elementary schools. It's hard to balance enrollment and ensure that class sizes remain, you know, on the smaller side, especially at the primary level. And that's hard because enrollment is volatile, right? And we don't know across the spring or the summer, you know, how many students will get at each grade, but we work really closely and collaboratively together and try to be creative and make sure that we can be flexible if enrollment needs change at one school or another. One example of how we do that is like collaborative hiring, so we all sit together and hire our teachers together to ensure that anyone we bring on board could really be a great fit in any of our schools, and that gives us the, you know, potential to be flexible if our enrollment shifts. But we still require that support in helping to ensure that our enrollment stays balanced and that our class sizes are optimal for our learners. A second thing that I just like to highlight as like a tremendous gift of the board is your commitment to our curricular work. That's kind of the engine that drives the great things that we make happen for students, and the board has always supported, you know, anytime we find a place where we could deepen students' work or extend the learning of our teachers, you've really supported us in that. I think the program review that we've done recently for math really exemplifies the board's commitment to that rigorous curriculum. You know, we were able to partner with a consultant and expert to help us really look at our math pathways, to think about programming and curriculum in the elementary schools in particular, and it's helped to open up more equitable access to rigorous curriculum for our math learners across the grades. So I just really want to thank you for that as well. That's the stuff that we can provide our students each day that makes school irresistible for them. The next thing that I wanted to talk about has to do with attendance, so I'm sure you've heard and read about how chronic absenteeism since COVID is something that we're really working hard to address in schools. Chronically absent students are absent greater than 10% of the days that we've been in school so far, and if you're missing that number of days, it really does have an impact on your learning and also your sense of community and belonging in school. If you're not there, it, it feels hard to, to know that school is for you, right, and it's a place where you belong. So we have a lot of efforts that we make day in and day out across our schools to really ensure that we're getting kids to school every day, things like home visits, individual meetings with families, really looking at the barriers to attendance and, and what's causing difficulty for kids coming into school and trying to study those things. But thinking about a position like the residency and security director helps us with a particular part. Sometimes we find that the students we're working really hard to get into school actually aren't Farmington students, right? And so having somebody to help us sort that out and make sure that our efforts are really focused on students that aren't Farmington students would be a tremendous help to all of us. I know all principals spend a lot of time on the residency pieces, and I think it would really be a help to families as well, especially if you're thinking about registering students in multiple schools, right? If there was a way to do that in sort of a centralized way, I think it would be a tremendous help to families as well. So I just appreciate your consideration of that position. And the last thing I want to speak about before I pass to my colleagues is a position that's in the budget this year, a .5 special education position at West District School, which is near and dear to my heart. As a principal, I feel so fortunate to support a couple of different specialized programs at West District School. One is our Specialized Learning Center, an inclusion-focused classroom that supports students primarily on the autism spectrum. And the second supports students with what we would call like a multiple disabilities profile, and these are students with emerging communication, mobility, self-care kinds of skills, and they're really a different learner population than, say, our resource classrooms or our Specialized Learning Center students would be. They need like a multidisciplinary approach to their care and their education, and that .5 position is both their teacher and sort of the coordinator of their care in that multidisciplinary approach. This was a critical position last year that was cut from the budget. We were able to fund it, I'm so grateful for that, through ESER, and so it's back on the budget now as a real, you know, a forever position, hopefully. And I just feel so fortunate that these students are a part of our learning community, that we're able to support them, that they're able to be in their own Farmington schools and reap the benefits of being in school, and also that their typically developing peers have the opportunity to have them in their schools as well. So I just thank you for consideration of that .5 position and the other... So I just thank you for consideration of that .5 position and the other work that I mentioned. And I'll pass to my colleagues, and then I know we'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
So I think it makes most sense for me to go next. I'm Katie Blor, Principal at Westwoods Upper Elementary School. I have such the extreme honor of being at the upper elementary where I am, you know, in close alignment with my K-4 colleagues, but also with middle level, the high school level too. So I know I have a very unique position. And I'm actually gonna share several sentiments that Carolyn just shared as well, but primarily my gratitude as well to the Board. We know that it's a challenging budget season, how much work you put in on Saturdays, over the weekends, you know, even coming up. We are so grateful that we have a Board that supports our core values and beliefs, our VOGC. We're all in it for the same reason, to make sure we're doing right by students and ensuring their success. So we are all so thankful. As Carolyn mentioned, we are, we do have some enrollment, you know, additions to Westwoods next year. I know the K-4s, there's enrollments, you know, changes there happening. Westwoods, we're actually going to have the highest number of students over at least the past six years. That's how far back I went, by upwards of at least 27 students on average. So one of the things that Westwoods advocated for was an additional fifth-grade teacher to support those low class sizes or, you know, typical standard class sizes, to support really deep student learning and relationships with students and teachers. We know that, you know, class sizes that support that, it allows for a community of learners that really is engaged and responsive to the needs of each individual. And so at Westwoods, we are advocating for the addition of a fifth-grade teacher that would then follow that large group of students in fifth grade up to the next level to support the class size. We also know, and anyone that's been in a grocery store lately knows that of the challenges of prices and costs for any kinds of supplies, groceries, gas, et cetera. And so one of the things at Westwoods that we are grappling with this year, to be totally transparent, is instructional supplies. It has been challenging to get what we need in a cost-effective way. And so one of the things that we have additionally advocated for is increase in our instructional supplies budget. You know, paper and pencils, believe it or not, it's amazing how much our fifth and sixth-grade students go through. You would think those eraser caps are like gold, okay? Everyone wants them, we can never get enough of them, and they're expensive. But really, it is something that we do kind of grapple with. But this year in particular has been a challenge just in supporting the day-to-day learning for our students, making sure they have what they need without asking for parents to continually purchase supplies over the course of the year. I'm so glad to see that Specialty Transportation was just presenting to us one of the things that we think about a lot, and not to speak for my colleagues, but, you know, really ensuring that we have a transportation company that is in alignment with our values and beliefs, our core beliefs here in Farmington. Dependability, safety, timeliness, those are all things that impact students every single day and ensuring that we have a quality of service that is commensurate with the education that we offer students is critically important. So I was very pleased to hear from Specialty Transportation as well. And like Carolyn had mentioned too, one of the things besides the attendance piece but residency is a continued area that takes up a lot of time and resources from both the administrative level as well as from the main office level. We at Westwood spend quite a bit of time following up on residency issues, paperwork, oftentimes, as Carolyn mentioned, related to students that don't live in Farmington. And so having a Director of Residency and Security would really help support the work and allow the principals and main office teams time to do the good work that we want to do, including being out in classrooms and supporting instruction and learning every single day. I want to thank this team again just for your continued support. We're so fortunate to work in such a collaborative partnership, and we look forward to seeing how things shake out over these next couple of weeks, and best of luck in your process.
Thank you, everyone. I'm Lisa Kapsinski, the Principal at Irving Robbins Middle School, and I certainly can echo everything that Dr. Blor and Mrs. Fink have said around attendance and transportation and certainly our concerns for providing a top-notch educational experience for our students and our families. What I want to do tonight is really ask you to think deeply about the mental health of our students. We are still in a post-pandemic world, and our children really suffered from social isolation during that time, and we still feel the effects of that in our school systems. And for Irving A. Robbins Middle School, that beautiful place that bridges Westwoods and Farmington High School, we do ask for a .5 increase to our social work staff. The job of a social worker is mighty and varied. So not only do they work on mental health, but when I heard Dr. Blor speak tonight about residency, once we have families registered in our schools, social workers are then picking up files and meeting with families and making sure that they're making connections to the schools of these students so that we know them well before they even step foot in our buildings. And so the job of our mental health staff, and in particular, our social workers, has increased dramatically since COVID. And so I'm hoping that you'll consider that .5 increase at Irving A. Robbins. We certainly are looking for an additional staff member to join our mental health team who can really do proactive work with our students. Sometimes we feel like so much of what we've done post-pandemic has been reactive, and so we'd like to really make sure that we're putting in place those social and emotional and behavioral services that kids need so we can do small group counseling, so we can attend to trauma, so that we can offer all types of services to our students and our families today in this post-pandemic world. And so I'd appreciate your consideration of increasing mental health staff, and certainly there is no child in any building that isn't touched by the expertise and the experience of those professionals. I also want to talk to you tonight about supporting curriculum. So I want to thank you because for years you have supported the work that I've done at the high school alongside Mr. Christ with Aspire and Capstone. We saw here tonight a product of the Aspire program who is doing exactly what we want our children to do. Stand up, demonstrate what they've learned, and advocate. Provide a great service to our community. And so we've thought a lot about that at Irving A. Robbins over the last six months. We've rebranded ourselves, we've got a new mission and a vision that has service at the heart of the work that we do. Middle schoolers are beautiful creatures. They still have a side of, I need to be needed by my family, but they're also really figuring out that I'm very independent and this amazing person, and I can use my talents and my skills to give back. And so at Irving A. Robbins, we have great plans for ourselves and our school around providing experiences similar to the Aspire and Capstone experience that will help students to garner all of the VOGC skills and showcase their learning in ways that serve themselves, their peers, the school community, and the communities beyond our walls. And so I appreciate that you always, as a Board, have considered the expertise that this team has in steering teaching and learning and providing us latitude at times to do very innovative work. It's always deliberate and thoughtful work, but we pride ourselves on being innovative. And when I ask teachers, potential teachers who come to the district, why do you want to be in Farmington? They almost always say, because the work you do here is cutting-edge, it's top of the line, and I want that for myself as a professional and for the children that are in this community. So that's because of all of you. So thank you for that, and I hope you think about that as you prepare to vote on the budget this week. Yeah, so.
Thank you, Lisa. My name's Russ Christ, I'm the Principal here at Farmington High School. I want to also start off by thanking you all for volunteering so much of your time and effort on the Board of Education. I have been in the district for 23 years, and I know that the great work that is happening here starts with all of your support, so we really appreciate that. I'm also gonna echo a couple of things that have already been brought up by my colleagues. First of all, transportation, again, really timely for this evening. As parents or, you know, in the district or previous parents in the district, you know that there are many issues that come with transportation, and really excited to have Specialty come on. And we, our community, our students and families deserve consistency, and it sounds that like Specialty is going to bring that for all of us. Also wanted to touch base on the fact that safety and security is our highest priority. A Director of Residency and Security would provide help with a lot of things. Chronic absenteeism and residency, a lot of time and resources are spent on that. Also adhering to constant updates from national, state, and local developments that come our way that we have to keep up with all the time. We work really closely with our local police department, I'm so grateful for their partnership. But having one person dedicated to that would have a positive impact on me, someone who has a building with about 1,500 people in it, but all of the buildings as well. And having one person to go to, one expert in our district, would have a huge positive impact on all of us. Also wanted to say that we so appreciate the funding that you all approve for curriculum, especially in a district that centers around continuous improvement. So everyone's kind of touched on that a little bit already. But I also wanted to point out that when there are efficiencies to be found, that we do find them. Some of you may remember that last year, our Science Department asked for additional FTEs. I want to give a shout out to our new Science Department Leader, her name is Jackie Patton, and she is going through this very thorough, informal program review to dedicate pathways. And that was one of the reasons that we had originally asked for FTEs last budget season. This year, by meeting with consultants, by visiting other districts that have, that are models for excellence in science pathways, we have been able to find our resources within by studying very closely the certifications that we already have and looking very closely at our pathways and planning over the course of several years on how we can get there without adding to the budget. So just want to give a, excuse me, a shout out to Jackie and just an example of how we are always looking for those different ways that we can find efficiencies within the resources that we already have. I wanted to also give an update on staffing and the budget. There is a culinary position, and students are signing up for classes now. There are about 10 days left in that cycle, so we're not even there yet. But as of today, we have 340 total requests for Culinary 1 and 112 total requests for Culinary 2. 452 requests to take Culinary next year. It is already a wildly popular elective at Farmington High School and a great opportunity for students, and with your approval, something that we all look forward to very much. I'm a professional taste tester, so I'm really looking forward to kind of getting in there and using my expertise for that role. Finally, you know, I'd be remiss not to mention the new building. As a Principal here, I'm really lucky, I get to go on tours, I spend a lot of time in the building. And, but really, like, highlights of my day, every morning, I drive up the hill and I see it, and every day when I leave, I like slow, even when my kids are up here, I drive them, they're like, like, stop slowing down and looking at the building. But I'm so proud of it, and I'm so excited by it. And the excitement has been incredible since we started to see it come above the fence line. I think that's when the energy really picked up, last fall, but it builds every single day. An important part of the planning, I'm lucky enough to kind of chair with Kim and the Farmington High School admin team. We have a Design for Future Committee that meets at least once a month. We plan logistics, we discuss and plan new opportunities for students in and out of the classroom in our new building. We envision instruction and a school of the future, and there's so much more to come with that. So I really want to thank you all again so much for giving that opportunity for our community and for our students, and also again, want to thank you for all that you do. So, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Seamus Cullen, Director of Special Services. You guys got to spend some time with me last time. So I've gone over my presentation, but I think it's really important just to highlight from what my colleagues have stated, they really got into the weeds about how important these positions really are. And if you think about the positions that they talked about today or the different types of things they talked about, a lot of it is special education-related. You know, transportation, whether it be, you know, the .5 social work position, you know, even class size, very increases, right, to allow our students to have easy access to smaller classrooms and not be pulling out into resource models and things like that. So overall, you know, I feel super grateful to be here for my first year and have a really, you know, a really supportive Board that I've been able to hear about through the process and really enjoy the time working with you so far. I think overall, the budget is somewhere where we need to get to, and I look forward to the support that you guys continue to have for us. I'd be happy to answer any questions, or everybody else have to answer any questions.
All right, before I open it up to the Board, Seamus, one thing I was thinking about, because this is your first presentation with us. And one of the things that I remember when we were going through the interview process with you was your prior experience up in the Winchester schools and the financial challenges you experienced up there. Could you give us a little sense of that and then how that's informed how you went about your budgeting?
Yeah, so unfortunately, you know, for the town of Winchester, it's a very blue-collar, very rural town. We went 10 straight years with a zero budget, 0% increase. So to have that as a budget, it makes it very difficult to plan accordingly. So you have to get very creative with the resources that you have and what you don't have. Spent a lot of time, Bill, working with grants, writing grants, looking at grants. That type of information was super important to how I built my budget. I'd also have to take a look at staffing, right, and see where our staffing needs are, where our weaknesses are, where our strengths were, and take a look at a variety of different other areas, whether it be transportation costs, whether it be, you know, professional services, whether we couldn't hire nurses or paraprofessionals, we had to look at agencies and things like that. So all of those pieces were put together as I looked at our budget in the Winchester Public Schools. In Farmington, you know, I have, you saw the presentation I had, the programmatic pieces that we have here in town really drive how our students are being kept in district. I also did not have programs in Winchester that I had to build. And so when I got there, there was over 37 kids out of district for a district that is not even close to the size of our district here. So to think about the programs that we built and the support that we have for the multi-handicap classroom, the related services, things like that, those are all cost-saving issues, but also provide an education for our students inside the Farmington Public Schools, not outside the Farmington Public Schools.
So it sounds like to me like you've had an experience with having to really be creative, with making do with what little resources you had.
Yes.
And you've kind of figured out a way to bring that to Farmington. Thankfully, we're not as hard-pressed as Winchester. There's also some outside circumstances that impacted that budgeting situation with what happened.
That is correct.
With Town Hall and some mouse fees and some things that had nothing to do with this. But, so you've got an experience with this level of creativity to turn something, you know, out of nothing effectively. And fair to say, you brought that with you to the process as you went to Farmington.
Absolutely, you know, I had the luxury of kind of doing zero-based budgeting at my previous district as well too, so having that knowledge of where to start. Truly zero-based budgeting.
Not by choice.
And I also had another different piece that is different about Winchester Public Schools, it is also the Gilbert School is one of three semi- quasi-public high schools in the state of Connecticut. So a lot of our funding directly from the town went to that tuition. So I really had to take a big chunk that we knew wasn't going to be there because that was tuition-based, and really look at, now where's my tuition or what do I have for my numbers to work off of? Again, transportation are areas where I cut costs. I'm really excited to work with Specialty, I really think that they have a good grasp on how to do specialized transportation. I worked with the local res, things like that, to really identify how we can provide services for students at a lower cost. We had a lot of agencies that were being utilized in the district, so we tried to bring our own employees in at times when it was appropriate. So there's a variety of different ways that we can look at it, as well as grant funding constantly that I'm searching for every day.
Thanks, Seamus, appreciate it. And just for the rest of the team, last year, we had a 2.0, right? You guys, we come to the district, we go for 299, and we came in at a 2.0. Not by choice, but because we were required to do that. Talk about how you creatively responded to that challenge, you know, in whatever roles that you had, whether it would be curriculum-based, whether it be anything at all. Just give a sense, like, you know, obviously you were required to be creative at a time when it was really tight. Talk about that if you could, please.
So like Seamus said, zero-based budgeting is really how we do our work as principals. We look at, like, what do we absolutely need to continue moving our programs forward in the way that they currently exist? And so I'm thinking from like the Westwoods perspective. My administrative assistant, myself, meet with every one of our kind of stakeholders as part of the team to talk through what do we need to ensure the program is continuing? But then, you know, are there like wish list items? And so we know that most of the greatest funding comes from staffing-type positions. And so as we look at our instructional supplies, we are really then thoughtful about the staffing asks that we're looking for, and we know that we're not asking for all the things that we want. And so I'm using the enrollment idea as a key factor here. You know, in order to maintain a class size that is a reasonable class size for a fifth-grade classroom, you know, I crunch the numbers, you know, enrollment based on projections for next year with the number of students we typically see coming in and out each year. What would that class size look like with my 14 current teachers? What does it look like with 15 teachers as an ask? And, you know, when we look at, like, what's in ask? And, you know, when we look at, like, what's in line with best practice in terms of what students really need to be successful in that responsive classroom, that's where we're kind of coming up with our numbers, our ask for us, if you will. But it is truly, you know, we start from the bottom, and say, here's what we need to continue those programs moving forward. And I know that's how many of my colleagues work with it, too, because we do know it's a bigger budget, it's a bigger number this year than it has been in the past. And so we definitely recognize that, the challenges of that, too.
Well, we also understand, you know, like, I speak for myself, we were put in a very challenging position, and you made it work last year, you know, as creatively as you possibly could. Anybody else?
Yeah, I would just say, being new to the process this year, one of the things that the three of us did is kind of the secondary pathway, is we made sure that we met, we made sure we looked at each other's budgets, we made sure that if there were any decisions that we were making, we understood the impact to student programming that it may potentially cause. And, you know, I, being new to it, I can tell you, we really are thinking conservative the entire time. You know, we, we value the experiences everybody is having these days with economic strife, or whatever you want to call it. People are watching their money, and people, we have to be conservative, because it's a challenging time. And so, you know, I will say that Town Hall was super supportive in meeting with me and my staff, again, being new, to help us understand what that meant, to help us understand this entire process, and really all with the good faith of, we have to do right by our students and by our town.
So as you went through your process, you worked along with some colleagues over in the council, I'm sorry, on the Town Hall side of things?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right. Okay, never mind. I mean, you mean, you mean our central office. My mind is central office. Thank you. Carolyn?
I think another way is just collaborating and working on contingency plans all the time, right? So constantly monitoring enrollment, thinking about, you know, if we get this many more first graders following projected trends from past years, and thinking about how many of this grade level do we typically acquire each year over the summer, and just being prepared with thoughtful contingency plans. I was monitoring my enrollment all spring and summer, in kindergarten in particular, and ended up with, you know, classes that were really small, and at East Farms, they needed an extra teacher, right? So that position went to East Farms to meet that need. So thinking collaboratively, and really having, like, contingency plans mapped out, helps us to look for and be efficient in ways that you can't be if you're not sort of thinking ahead.
I think this district does an amazing job, gives us a foundation of core documents and values that we are able to apply in every situation. Like, how does this, or making a decision about, you know, something in the budget, how does this help us, help us to accomplish this? And when you have that lens going into every decision, then you are able to, I think, make efficient but effective decisions in your budget.
Thanks, guys. I'll open it up to questions. Anyone?
I just want to say thank you. I mean, very informative. It really gives me a deeper understanding, a greater perspective of some of the asks that are in the budget, and the importance of them, you know, of some of the things that you've talked about. So thank you. And also, thank you for all the hard work, all the hours that you put in to crafting your budget, and thank you to your teams, your, your leadership teams. Because I know you, you've had to do a lot of hard work before it gets to Kathy.
Right.
And I just want to recognize that.
And just echoing that, I made a point in making sure I thanked each one of you individually on Saturday.
Yes.
Because I know how hard you work. I know how hard it is to work with the resources that you have, and that you do amazing things. And I also know that the numbers that you brought forward to the superintendent this year are a fair and accurate depiction of what you really need to continue to deliver the services that our families in Farmington expect. So I want to thank you for the hard work, time, and effort you placed in that, and the sacrifices it means when you go, because you have families, too. And, and so I understand that. I think you all understand that. I want to thank you, really. Thank you.
Thank you so much. They're, they're the best team, anywhere.
All right. Thanks, guys. So we're on to item 7A, consideration of new business. What I'd like to do, and I've kind of spoken with you all individually offline, well, before we do that, Kathy, what we, what we have before us, well, I'll say, item seven, new business, consideration of motion to adopt the 2024-2025 school district budget. What we have before us is a tentative budget number. Before we provide a final number to the district, I'm sorry, to the board, is there any other, did you go back after hearing the feedback from Saturday, Kathy, did you find anything that you might be able to help us out with?
So it's a very small number. We did find a $3,000 discrepancy in one of the salary lines, so we would reduce the budget by that 3,000 as we look towards, you know, finalizing the budget. That's one area. So I know, I think we've already put that in a motion on, on this, one of the slides.
Why don't we bring up the slide, then? All right. So my intent is to have the motion called and seconded, and then I would open it up for discussion. And it's in the context of that discussion that each of you can speak, make amendments to any, or make any alterations, additions, subtractions, whatever you'd like. It's in the context of those discussions that we will address those issues. So I would ask for a motion?
I move that the Farmington Board of Education recommends to the Farmington Town Council a 2024-2025 budget of $80,468,995. That reflects the total increase of $4,531,773, or a 5.97% increase over the 2023-2024 Board of Education budget.
I got a second, please.
Second.
Okay. Motion is now on the table. Discussion. I'm going to go around the room, and then I'll ask if anybody wants to add anything, you know, delete anything, ask any questions, make any amendments. And as though, as that process goes through, I'll kind of talk about how Robert's rules will affect each person's desired intention, how they want to handle it. So Marty, do you have anything?
No. Just looking at the math, you said $3,000? 3,000 off the 80,000, 80,477 would be 3,167, if my math is right.
Sorry, wait.
Was there something else that was changed?
Yeah, the changes on Saturday.
Oh, there are other changes on Saturday?
Yes, the total changes are 8,172, including Saturday.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's where, okay, I caught it.
Thanks, Marty. I would, I would
Thank you.
I would have done the same thing. Erica?
Thank you. And I don't know, maybe it's a question and a comment, if that's okay?
Sure.
Okay. So, you know, I very much appreciate the time that you, and all the staff, and you all have taken, and Saturday was a big eye-opener for me, because this was this great, you know, experience. All the materials, content, everything, amazing, informative. I've spent quite a bit of time, I tend to highlight in blue, because I don't want to offend anybody in red, you know, with red markers and stuff like that. So went through all the, as much as I could. And, you know, we've used the word creative often today, and we use the word creative on Saturday a lot, and trying to be more creative. And I, personally, for me, I think that that's an insult to our, our teachers, our staff, you know, because the reality is, we know that you are all being creative all the time with what you are being budgeted for. And so when I was looking through this, you know, and even listening to the principals speak about the needs that they have in the sense of personnel, you know, special education across the board, you know, I wonder how much of that is actually, do we need more? Because I know in our town, and I know in our state, that is something that is elevating over and over again, year after year, when it comes to, you know, social workers. I know for a fact that that is something that is an increase across the board. That is the field I work in. That is something that I do for our state of Connecticut, is looking at our children's behavioral health needs, not only, you know, in the home, but in the schools. And I know that that is very much a need. And so I wonder again also if that is enough. And for today, maybe for this year, it might be enough. But looking and projecting for the future, and, you know, the pandemic, you know, I always say it's, it, we were already in a crisis with behavioral health for our kids, and what our schools were experiencing and seeing and observing, but it tipped it over. And a lot of our kids are struggling. So I wonder about that particular allocation there of a, you know, at the middle school, you know, point five, knowing that it's, that may be a need, future need, you know. I look at the special ed, if you look at page 17, by the way, this document was my favorite document. Everything else was great, but this document with the Q and A, every question we asked on Saturday was here. If you go back and review this, I urge all our board members, if you didn't go through it line by line like I did, you answered it here. But when I, I wouldn't want to be the person to vote anything or decrease anything when it comes to our special education. You know, I'm looking at this. And so my question, and I have more, I wrote, I mean, I literally have pages of stuff, but I'm not going to hold this up. But my big picture question is, and again, knowing, you know, for me, when we say creative, how much more creative can we be? You know, we're talking about critical services for our kids. Education is a critical service. Where we're talking about engagement, engagement into school, chronic absenteeism, we know for a fact that data shows that, you know, by the time they get into ninth grade, if they're not engaged, their likelihood of being, not graduating high school is very high. And I say a risk, because they're not lost yet. We can still engage them. And that position is critical, because that position is the position that will go out there and help engage the parents and the students back into school. That is a critical position. So to me, my big question, and I only one, is, you know, how will these critical services be met if we don't approve this budget? Because we need to.
You know, the, the whole budget process for us is guided by these core documents that we have. And that vision really helps us to prioritize for our students what they need. And these are all positions that are needed. They're needed right now. Some of them were asked for last year, because we needed them this year. Some, we were able to put on ESAR, and those services were there for our students this year, and some were not. And so we do have, I think Lisa said it, we do conservatively budget. We are proud of our rankings when it comes to our spending, because we look at those rankings and say, you know, we're not spending at the top, but we're producing outcomes at the top. And that's because of the people in this district. They are incredibly dedicated to those core documents. We are all on a journey together. And I think that makes a huge difference, and makes Farmington very special. Kim was sharing across all areas what leaders are dealing with. And one of the things she shared with me, and I just think it's something we all should be thinking about, is just this idea of, right now, we're dealing with a lot of volatility for leaders. And the answer to the volatility is having a very clear vision. And Farmington has that clear vision. Another leadership challenge across many areas, not just school districts, everywhere, right now in our world, is uncertainty. And so we work really hard with our faculty and our administrators to help everyone understand what's going on right now, what we're doing to address those issues. And this budget helps our teachers know how we're addressing the issues. And there are things that we put in there, because they have expressed to us, these are the needs for our students. So this idea of uncertainty can really be difficult right now. And we want a sustainable approach to improvement at all times, and this budget does that. Another is complexity. There's a lot of complexity right now for leaders. We're, we are challenged by that. But in Farmington, we have clarity, and that's the answer to complexity, to be very clear about what's important and where we're going. And I think that's how we've remained steady in a time of complexity, volatility, and uncertainty. And the last is ambiguity. And the answer to that is agility. And you could hear some of that, the flexibility we have, that we're always thinking in a really creative way, how could we get to that without spending too much? Try to pilot something, or look for some grant funding, or how could we use this differently? How could we use the people we have here a little differently? And that science example was a beautiful example of that. So those are the four challenges for leaders, or four challenges for all of us at this table. And Farmington has had the answer to that, to, to all four of those areas, and it's like baked into our DNA. So I really appreciate that, that question, because we do bring things here that we need. And, you know, we are so, you heard all of our principal, they're so appreciative of all of you, because you are our partners. And what happens here has a ripple effect throughout the district. And I've just, in my 15 years, I've had an incredible experience with all of you and previous boards of ed, in really putting students first.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks, Erica. Sylvie?
I just have a little comment.
Sure.
So, well, first, I want to thank superintendent, and of course, her wonderful team for all the hard work they have done. I know the increase that is being asked is higher than the past years, at 5.98%. I understand why, for many reasons why. And for examples, for people who didn't go through the whole budget books, I'm just going to throw out a few examples. State mandates is a huge one, higher cost of the bus company, the new high school and positions that are needed there, and other schools coming off ESAR funds, and of course, inflation costs, and much more. I look back many years, and we have not had a almost 6% increase since 2004 and 2005. Although I also feel that 3% may be way too low this time around. When I think of 5.98%, I really do have a hard time swallowing that for taxpayers in Farmington. I'd like to meet possibly halfway, not 3%, not 6%, maybe more in the middle. How about a 4.5, 4.4, 4.5, and what that would look like? I, I don't know. But this is a collaborated effort between the BOE and the town council, and I hope we can come up with a reasonable or common sense increase for our students in Farmington. And that's it. Thank you.
Well said, Sylvie. Thank you. Angela?
Going to me. I like that, switching it up. So I'll echo what Sylvie said in terms of, I just have a comment. Thank you, guys, for the preparation of everything. I enjoyed, too, hearing from the principals, hearing from Seamus and everyone else. It's been a great experience for me, just in terms of education. I love learning about things that I'm involved in, and this has truly been a learning experience. So that's been very proactive for me. One thing I will echo that Sylvie is saying, though, is I don't see our work with the town council being as collaborative as I would love it to have seen it been through this process, in that the town council had charged us kind of with a 3% increase. And I don't see it as a mutually exclusive ask, that they just asked us for that out of nowhere. You know, they put a lot of effort into maintaining our town services and our debt services. The debt services specifically are of a concern to me, because those are directly related to the new high school, which has a huge impact on the Board of Ed. And that's something that we all had bipartisan support on. So that, to me, that's a perfect example how the town council and us have worked together over the last several years. You know, they gave us almost $150 million, including additional referendum money when things went over during COVID. So to me, that's a partnership. When they came to us and said 3%, that's an equivalent to 6% tax increase on all residents of Farmington. I'm very cognizant of my position on this board, and the nine other, or the nine members, including myself. And just knowing everyone for the last, you know, month, I think we're all very blessed on this board. So what I mean by that is, whatever the tax increase is, I think we're all blessed members of this community. When Seamus spoke about Winchester, that resonated with me, because there are blue-collar workers here. There are retirees here. There are single-family, you know, single-parent homes here. We talk about the families that are on reduced lunches here, and how that number is growing. And the cost of living increase is not going to go up, honestly, even by 6% if we came in at the 3% Board of Ed budget. Forget about if we were at a 5.97%, that translates to an 8% tax increase, not just on us, not just on the people of the village, or specific neighborhoods in town. That's across all boards. These are already families struggling to not go to extracurricular activities because they can't afford them. These are people on, you know, fixed incomes. So to me, I would have, I would need to see what a 3% looks like, and I And I agree with Sylvie, I came in very open-minded to this process. I was not like set on 3% and like had my heels dug in on that by any means. But I think we're doing a disservice to the entire town by saying we're submitting 5.9% and not even looking or considering what a 3% looks like. If we were to look at a 3% and then talk through as a group what is needed and what's not needed, I think that was be more of a collaborative effort and would translate to how the, the town council's looking at it. They're paying down our debt services for the high school, and that's a big component of why we were given 3%. That number just didn't come out of nowhere. And that was sold to our residents when the new high school came, that for the next 20 years, we would have increases, and those increases would be very focused on the first five years, which with this year and the next few years being the most intense. So given all of that, I'm completely transparent, I've said that from the beginning, I will vote down the 5.97% budget just based on the fact, I don't feel like I've been given all the tools necessary as a Board of Ed member to represent all of my constituents in Farmington, not just the members of this board, and make an informed decision based on that. So just transparently, that will be my vote, and that is why.
Thank you. Appreciate that. James.
Yes, thanks. First of all, this has been a fascinating process to go through for the first time, on top of the, the transportation contract, getting thrown right in the fire the day after I was sworn in. So it's been an amazing experience, working with all of you in such close proximity over the last several weeks. In consideration of this motion, I do intend to vote in favor, in the spirit of the type of communication that I campaigned, campaigned on last fall, I thought it'd be prudent for me to publicly state the reasons why I am supporting. First, I wanted to acknowledge, and I think it's incredibly important for the Farmington community to hear, just how much work is done behind the scenes that I've seen firsthand over the last several weeks by so many high-quality professionals. We are so lucky to have you guys working so hard and diligently and dedicated to committing, committing, always doing what best for our students and our educators. Make no mistake, the consideration of a nearly 6% increase on by far the largest portion of our town budget is not easy and a decision I do not take lightly. After all, I am also a taxpayer. This year's budgetary considerations are quite unique, in my opinion. We'll have a new transportation contract, answering the call of our community, but a contract that does not come without, without cost. We have ESAR grant funding that is at the end of its life cycle, state mandates that come with partial funding or no funding at all. We have increased contractual obligations and are contending with the increased cost for supplies, just like we all are at home. Lastly, I would remiss, be remiss if I didn't mention the budget cuts our district was forced to make last year, which simply kicks the proverbial can down the road. This board here is to provide oversight to the budgetary process, ensuring that we are not only adequately funding our school, school district, but doing so in a fiscally prudent manner. With that said, it is my opinion that the superintendent's recommended, recommended budget is clear, concise, creative, and free of excess or unnecessary spending. It succinctly and accurately reflects the needs of our school district, and I encourage my fellow members to support this motion, and I implore our town council to follow in the coming, coming weeks. Thanks.
Thank you, James. Bethy.
Thanks, Bill. I want to start also with a thank you and a note of gratitude to the superintendent and her whole entire team, and recognition of the incredibly hard work at yet another challenging budget season in Farmington. I think the superintendent has brought forward a thoughtful, careful budget, and that's what's being recommended to this board. I think it includes a measured approach to build back from major cuts that were made to the education budget by our town council last year. And this was after the superintendent and the Board of Education went through a series of significant cuts before the budget was presented to the council last year. So now this current board is faced with the task of addressing deferred needs, basically. We talk about deferred maintenance, I see this as deferred needs of our students and the entire school district. So as a Board of Education, it's, it's our responsibility to bring forward a budget to the town council and to the community that meets the needs of our students. And that's really who I think of as a priority and my constituents in my role here on the board. While this budget has come to us with an increase higher than in most years, as Sylvie stated, I think the superintendent's presentation and the information that was brought forward, other presentations from other administrators, and we took a lot of time receiving information and discussing information on Saturday, and I think that's given us clear justification for the increase that was brought forward. I think this is a thoughtful, responsible budget that addresses the needs and the priorities of our town's schools, and I will be voting in support of the superintendent's recommended budget.
Thanks, Beth. Nadine, I didn't forget you. Actually, to be honest, I did. James, you minded me.
I got you, Nadine.
Why, thank you, James. It must have been the telephone that's sitting right there.
I haven't, I haven't seen a telephone in about five, 10 years.
So I, I would be remiss, I can echo everybody in the room and your sentiments. I commend Kathy, the central office, all the faculty for their hard work expertise over the past few months, putting together, or putting our students first in the creation of this budget, which I, as a parent of students that are no longer in the school, still feel very passionate and understand the needs that we need to move forward with, and the fact that we've had to adjust last year to take things off and, you know, accommodate the budget we had at hand. I am, just to echo what Erica said, I think the creativity of our board and staff always looking at ways, I am just a little concerned of such, you know, such a big increase out of the gate. I would, you know, stand by what Sylvie was saying, is if we could just, you know, take one path, really looking at any additional creativity of finding a way where we can look at an adjusted, you know, budget number. I don't know, Kathy, you mentioned this $3,000 discrepancy, I know that may change the percentage a little bit, but I, I just am concerned at the impact to our community overall with such a large increase in a year. I'm not discounting that we don't need to do this. I just feel like without, just one more pass, I'm challenged with approving.
Thank you, Nadine. Andrea.
I also want to thank Kathy and the rest of our leadership team, everybody at Central Office, all the building principals, and like I said, their, their leadership teams within their buildings as well. Excuse me, what I wanted to start with is, we are the Board of Education, we are not the town council. We do not decide how much money is spent on education in Farmington. That's the responsibility of the town council. However, we are stewards of taxpayer dollars, and we need to ensure that the budget we recommend is fiscally responsible, that it reflects operational efficiencies and cost savings while addressing the needs of the school district and maintaining the high quality of education our community has come to expect. And I believe that the current recommend, excuse me, the current recommended budget as presented does just that. I believe the superintendent and her leadership team have presented a budget that is both responsible and responsive to the needs of the school district and not based upon just wants. There is not a lot of optional spending in this budget. It was already reduced by $500,000 before it was even presented to us. We don't even know what else was there. It's a budget that addresses contractual obligations, special education mandates, mental health, and multilingual learner needs, improved transportation services, and that's not an exhaustive list. It is a budget that has been significantly impacted by the current economy, the ending of ESAR grants, and the restoration of funding for existing staffing, programming, services that were cut last year due to, due to the reductions made by the town council. I don't feel at this point that there is a need to be creative or ask the superintendent for ways to further reduce this budget. I plan to vote in favor of the superintendent's recommended budget as presented, and I encourage my colleagues on the board to do so as well.
Thanks, Andrea. Well, no surprise, I would have voted yes as well. Couple of things Angela mentioned that I kind of want to make sure we're clear on. It is absolutely true that when the, when the town council and the Board of Education went collectively to the community in asking for it to support the construction of the new high school after it had been previously defeated, one of the commitments that was made was that we would try to keep our budgets at around 3%. That absolutely was, I was part of those conversations. And the first year that that, that was done three years ago. Two years ago, we, we hewed to that 3% without any issue. It was actually a really great experience. It was, it was, there was very little contention about it. The district was on board, we, we made reductions. And that budget passed on, on Saturday. We submitted it that Saturday, because we were all in line with the, with the understanding of the commitment that we make to the town. Because we wanted, because we need the high school. Last year, same, same idea. It was brought to this board, and the superintendent and her team in good faith, came back with a budget at, it was a 10th of, at 2.99%. And again, we ratified the budget on Saturday because this board was committed to honoring the, the promise made that we would try to stay in that range. And then last year, after all that went down, the board, the council in its wisdom kicked it back to us at a 2%. So if we're concerned about being at 3%, the minimum increase this year has to be 4% if we're going to average it out over, over a 20-year timeline. If you do that, and then you add the bus contract, which all of us, all of our constituents have demanded, that gets you to almost 5%. And that's before we talk about all the programming needs, all the special service challenges, all the materials we need, all the supplies, all the technology that was cut out from last year, it's coming off of ESAR. So while I understand and appreciate those of us who are challenged by the fact that we haven't really taken a pass at a lower number, I'm not sure what the lower number is. So from my perspective, we're called upon to be leaders here. And leadership sometimes requires doing hard things, and that includes telling people who support you and who vote for you why you're going to do something that they may not like. And that might include something that has an economic consequence. And that's not easy, and I understand that. But as Andrea says, that's not our charge. Our charge is to present what the superintendent and her staff believes is the bare minimum to properly educate the students in the town of Farmington. And I would respectfully submit, for all the constituents that are worried about tax increases, there are twice as many who are worried about what kind of education their kid's going to get in the 21st century. It's our job to make sure the council understands what those needs are. And I've sat for 16 years watching this budget process, and this is the, we do this all the time. And I made it very, very clear at the beginning of my other presentations on Saturday, there's only one budget, there's only one house, and that's Farmington. Our job is to let the town know what we need to do to make sure our kids are good, they're all set, and they're properly educated and prepared for the 21st century. With that being said, all those in favor approving the motion on the floor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Pull the board, I'm sorry, all those against?
Nay.
Nay. I'm going to pull the board. Marty?
Nay.
Aye, yes.
Yeah, aye? Marty's an aye?
Aye.
Erica's an aye?
Nay.
Sylvie's a nay?
Nay.
James is an aye? Nadine's a nay?
Yes.
Beth?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm an aye. So that would be six to three. Motion passes. Take a breath. It was a lot. Thank you all. I want to say this before we go on, I really appreciate the questions that were asked throughout this process. There is no doubt in my mind, everyone came to this process in good faith with, with really trying to do what they think is right. So I want you to know that. I appreciate that. Next item on our agenda is item eight, consideration, the Assistant Superintendent's report.
We will have the financials at the next.
Okay, oh, it's none, I'm sorry, I didn't see it. I apologize. It's on the agenda. All right, so I gave my report to the chair.
Hasn't he done enough? I mean, like, yeah.
Yeah, he's done enough, right. How many calculators can the guy burn through? Okay. All right. That being said, any motion to adjourn, please?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 We are adjourned.
Aye.